Hello and welcome to episode forty four of the nine oh fiver podcast. My name is Roland Tanner.
I am Joel McLeod.
And today we're talking about schools again, and it seems that education in the nine oh five region is seldom out of the news. This week's story revolves around the appointment in York Catholic District School Board of someone with only three years of experience as a teacher at a private school, under rules introduced this summer by the provincial government. The appointment has provoked considerable outrage among some of the parents and students. To dig into why there's been such a negative reaction, we've invited back Cindy Cosentino, who was our first ever podcast guest back in August of last year. Cindy retired last year after thirty two years as an elementary and high school teacher in Hamilton and Halton School Boards, including periods working at the Ministry of Education. Has now been kind enough to provide the benefit of her extensive experience and understanding of Ontario schools. Yeah, so welcome back to the podcast Cindy. I'm great to have you back again. And as we're just saying before we came on, yeah, you're our unpaid education correspondent. And we've invited you back on to discuss a couple of things to do with what's going on with schools at the moment. And in particular, this appointment in York Catholic District School Board of a new education director, Robert Hofstadter, which has caused some controversy. And maybe you could kick us off Cindy with just kind of what's going on. Exactly. I mean, just from my point of view, what is an education director? And why this has become a controversial point for for many people?
So traditionally, a director of education, the progress through the school system is usually you start off as a teacher. You spend however many years teaching in a public school, which is Catholic or non Catholic. You will take your PQP, which is Principals Qualification Courses. You will interview sometimes frequently to become or many times before you become a vice principal, then you move into principal role. Once you're in that, if you want to continue, you may be considering becoming a supervisory officer. There are more courses, more learning, and then you can apply for positions there. And then from there, you may move into a director's role. So by the time you have become a director of education in the past in Ontario, you have been in a classroom, probably many classrooms. You've been a principal of a school, probably many schools or several, and you have held the role of superintendent. So you bring to that position knowledge of a school board system at many levels. So this is quite a departure from that process.
And and just sort of clear, like the the current controversy is it stems back from a change that the the current provincial government made to the Education Act, if I'm not mistaken, allowing for school boards to look beyond those qualifications that you had that you had mentioned in their search for an education director.
Right. From what I understand, they removed the the requirement that you had to be a certified teacher, which means you also don't have to be a principal or superintendent, because to be a principal or a superintendent, you have to be a qualified teacher. So by removing that, you've eliminated those those other qualifications. So you could have someone who, and in this case, this person does have their OCT, they are a qualified teacher in Ontario. So they are meeting that minimum requirement, but they do not have the other two parts that are typically what you see for a director, which is the superintendent experience and the administrator experience.
Now, why, why do you think the government might have made this change? I mean, was there, is there any evidence that the system as it existed before didn't work? Or is there something else at work here, do you think?
I have always been very proud to to work in the Ontario system. We're top ten in the world in math, and I think we're seventh overall when they do pizza testing internationally. It's a good system. It works for the kit for kids. And we have better outcomes when it comes to equitable outcomes than many jurisdictions. So it's a system I've been very proud to work in and be a part of. So I don't think there was anything broken about the Ontario education system. I know I I am biased, I get that. But even looking at objective data from outside Ontario, I felt like we were doing well by the kids that are in our system.
So the, I mean, the rationale that I understand it is that it's just throws the net. You're able to cast that so much further and wider, and you're able to draw from a deeper pool of talent to to fill this role. Because I mean, this role really is, you're essentially, I mean, if to analogy analogize it, a CEO of the school board, I mean, you're covering millions of dollars in expenditures. You're authorizing, you know, major build, major infrastructure investments in terms of school remodelings or school bills, if need be, for new new schools, hiring, contract negotiations. Like, it's a, it's a huge responsibility to to sit there and have to negotiate these large contracts on behalf of the taxpayer.
Yes, but in a school board, you have your academic, you have two types of supervisory offers officers. You have your academic ones who are in charge of schools and education and the learning side of it. And you also have financial capital. You have all of those people too to guide you. So it's not like the director has to know everything about all things. You have people with expertise who were formerly civil engineers or, you know, CFOs in an organisation who can be hired to do those roles. So you do have non academic supervisory officers to advise and guide a director.
And I believe that, well, I actually, I know that the justification that the Minister of Education, Stephen Letchy, gave back in the summer was that, well, by doing this, we we widened the pool. And he actually pointed to the lack of directors of education from from visible minorities, which is a number of interesting points coming from that. Certainly, it's true that of the seventy two, and I'm just reading from Toronto Star here, so people know I'm copying this from. Three of the seventy two directors of education in the province are visible minorities, which is, I would imagine, far, far, far below the the kind of ratios in the population at large. So that's a fair point. However, Mr. Hofstadter is certainly not a visible minority. It seems a very, well, when I was thinking about this, you can comment when you think this is a fair comment or not. I was surprised that that comment didn't attract more attention at the time, because the implication is there aren't enough good teachers who are visible minorities in Ontario to fill the director of education post, which I would think deeply, deeply offensive to anybody who is a visible minority working in the Ontario schools.
Well, I just, I'm going to jump in there. I would argue, your point is is kind of valid there, Roland, but I would also look at, say, maybe it's a look at what barriers are in place in the mobility of teachers who are of minor, who are of identified minority status. That was their ability to move up through the ranks. If they want some kind of career advancement, if they want to expand their their base of expertise. Now, how easy is it for them to to do so, so that they can one day say, yeah, I'm going to throw my hat in the ring to become an executive or an education director?
Yeah, there's a lot of systemic issues that need to be addressed rather than just catapulting directly to the top position, which honestly, I taught thirty two years in the system. You couldn't pay me enough to be a director of education. That is a job that is so complex and so nuanced. And to imagine going into that with such limited experience, it's, it's very, it would be very terrifying to anyone who has been in a school teaching in a public school, I think.
Well, let's, let's talk about Mr. House setters expertise as to why he got the job. According to to reports, he's only, he's only been a teacher, a teacher for three years, if I'm not mistaken. And and his, and that was in a private institution, not a public. And then before that, he made his name in cybersecurity for Scotiabank, which is quite an admirable position. I mean, that that he clearly does have education and a drive to to do that. So kudos to him for that. But I mean, what can you maybe comment, like, how does that make him qualified to become a director of education for York Catholic District School Board?
I don't know, and I I don't know. I mean, I looked over his qualifications, he could go on the College of Teachers and look at, you know, all the additional qualification courses when they were certified, et cetera. And he seems, and all of his other degrees, he seems like a very smart, capable person who's done extremely well in his field. And I have no doubt is highly capable with the skills that are necessary. But I still believe you need some underpinning understanding of the system and how it works. I also have the mindset of coming from the private sector to the public sector. It's a very different world that there are, it's a very different outcome we're looking for. Directors are all about student achievement and student outcomes. It's not about bottom lines financially, or, you know, it's a very different metric that you use in a school board to determine success. It's also extremely nuanced in terms of the relationships you have with your superintendents, your teachers, your trustees, elected people, your federation, there are unions involved. It's extremely complex. And without any experience navigating that, and you're right, even the teaching experience he's had has been in a private school. So all of that, it was a single standalone school, it wasn't even a school system.
So I think this, well, there's an important additional point we can add there. The school is St Michael's College School in Toronto. Would you care to guess who else went to that school who's currently involved in our education system? That would be the Minister of Education, Stephen Letchy.
Yeah, it's interesting.
And and that, and that is, his writing is in that board. It should also be pointed out as well. I I'm curious, like, I think you make a good point there, Cindy, about the outcomes are very different that. I mean, we obviously, we don't want school boards to go over budget and to have runaway expenses, obviously. But that doesn't really happen all that often here in Ontario. And I, maybe you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I mean, for the most part, the, and I'm being general here. School boards are pretty well run financially in the province. Am I wrong on that on that assumption?
That is my understanding, and I know there have been instances where school boards were taken over by the ministry to deal with issues with financial mismanagement or poor management. But my understanding is for the most part, they're, well, I mean, it's, there's lots of oversight. It's certainly not something that can be done in private. So there are lots of eyes on the school board and their finances. And my, my understanding, as naive as it may be, was that that was not a huge area of concern. However, the word efficiencies gets used a lot when someone gets pulled in from private sector. And that's where I'm concerned, because someone might be, and I think the current government is really good at finding efficiencies and not really understanding the implications of those efficiencies on people. And my fear would be someone who doesn't understand a public school system, the students that it is serving, the families that it is serving, may see an efficiency and not understand completely the repercussions of that efficiency. And I would hope the trustees would guide in that decision making and the superintendents would as well. But it just, it feels like a gap in their understanding to me. And I hope I'm wrong for the students in that school board. I hope that this turns out to be someone who is able to figure this out on the ground very quickly and understand the system. And that would be my dream, but I am very leery of.
Well, I mean, I kind of talked with a bit about that private public dichotomy there. That the, you know, in the private sector, you're able to negotiate kind of one on one, one entity to another for a mutual beneficial outcome. I find that public education is very different, because as a parent of a child in the system, I'm involved. You know, I I'm involved at my child's in the school. I I'm involved somewhat at the board level of just, you know, paying attention to what's going on. And it's, I find that the, it's very different from a private sector to a public sector that, you know, there are a lot more eyes on you in the public sector than than in the private. I mean, that's, everybody talks about how the the public sector, oh, nothing is done, it's all full of incompetence. I would argue no private sector's done, probably has just as much incompetence or just as much screw ups. We're all human, after all. The problem is, everybody pays attention to the to the public sector, because we're all invested in it.
Yes, I a hundred percent agree. I think, I believe the people, I mean, I've only known, I have the utmost of respect for the people I've worked for that were superintendents and the directors, because I know, I can see as I've moved through the system, the complexity of the job. And you're right, there, every parent in every classroom, this director will be talking to parents. Someone tweeted something about wait till, I think it was wait till someone shows up wanting to know why Suzie can't bring her bunny to class. And it's like, yeah, no, you're dealing with that and you're dealing with multimillion dollar budgets. And like I said, unions, all the other aspects of it that are, it's so nuanced and complex. And I hope he has a good team to support him.
Yeah, and time will tell, and we have to accept, you know, in this individual case of this individual gentleman, absolutely. I think we have to do that, those are the rules that are now in place. We can just raise an eyebrow, certainly, at some of the coincidences. I think in terms of of what was Bill one eighty seven, Bill one eighty seven, correct me if I've got that number wrong.
One ninety seven, I believe.
One ninety seven.
Yeah.
My numbers, this is why I did very badly at math at school. You know, the, the, this was sold to us as as enabling greater diversity, which would be a good thing. And also, the phrase used was a generational change. Now, I mean, I'm not particularly seeing Mr. Hofstadter as a generational change, let's just put it that way. No, he's probably about my age.
No, I was not, yeah, no.
Unless you're talking about an old generation. It's just speaks to to my mind, don't let me put words in your mouth, the dishonesty of the government in how they were selling this change. And that it actually does nothing for visible minority teachers working within the school system to to make it easier for them to apply for these jobs and to overcome the inherent systemic problems that tend to count against people from visible minorities getting to the top level. And it does, all it means is that people without qualifications can now apply for a job that they need to start to be able to apply for. And I just, I find it maddening, but do you think any of that is unfair as a comment from someone?
And I think, like, I was looking up the board, just curious about what's been going on. And I found last November, their students staged a walkout to protest what they're perceiving as racism in their classrooms. And so there's obviously something going on in this board where the students are identifying a problem. You have to listen to your kids, they know what's going on in the classroom. And if they're saying there's a problem, there's a problem. So this is a little bit of a, I would think to that student organisation, that was kind of a grassroots organisation that formed. This is a really troubling development. This doesn't, this isn't a good signal that they've listened to them.
Well, we we actually extended an invitation to that organisation to come on this podcast, and we want to hear from them. And I'll, I'll reiterate, if anyone from that organisation is listening to this episode by any chance, please contact us, because we very much want to talk to you about your side. I, but I, I want, I want to talk kind of what Roland was just talking about, but this, you know, the idea of, oh, we're going to cast the net wider and more diverse and all that. I'm, I'm curious to know, like, maybe, you know, the idea of we need, we need to go outside the the pool that we normally draw from for this job. I'm thinking, I don't think Mr. Hofstadter necessarily has the right qualifications. He has a depth of knowledge, he is very well versed in his field, no question about it. But the fit for this job, I question, time may tell, and I may be proven wrong, I'll leave that out there. But I'm wondering, like, would Scotia, like, flip it the other way, to fill his job at Scotiabank? Would Scotiabank be going to the former, to take a director of education to say, hey, do you want this job? You know, the, the, the former guy who had this job went to go to a, to cover a school. Are they going to go start knocking the door of a few of the school boards around the province and saying, hey, do you guys want this job? I don't think so.
It seems to be a one way, anyone can do education, anyone can be a teacher. We can put uncertified teachers in the classroom, we can put anyone in the director's role. But it doesn't go the other way, you know, being a director doesn't qualify you to be a CEO in any organisation that I'm aware of. I looked up hospitals, because that's the one that you often hear is, well, you don't have to be a doctor to be a CEO of a hospital. And it's true, but most of them have quite extensive experience in healthcare. They may not be physicians, but they've worked in the field and have an understanding of the context quite extensively. So I was wondering the same thing, I wonder if Scotiabank will be considering hiring a former director for that role. And I'm, and again, I know there are skill sets that would transfer, but without the foundational understanding of the system, it would be really tough to be the director of of cybersecurity without any background in cybersecurity.
Right.
Or that you've worked in it for two years.
If he's spent three years with Microsoft Windows, I'm sure you can do it.
So we will not be getting, we will not be getting a partnership with Microsoft after this episode.
Yeah, no, it's a very good question, though. And I mean, it's, the other part of this that, I mean, resonates personally is, like I said, I've worked with a lot of administrators, SOs, directors that I really respect. I respect their skill set, I respect the career that they've had and the knowledge they bring to the table. I've appreciated and admired how they've worked in such, I mean, look at this year for a superintendent. I know a few of them personally, and they have not stopped working, like, it is full out all the time. And I appreciate that their understanding of the system is nuanced and they're balancing all of the demands. It feels like none of that is valued when you hire someone. It feels like all of the experience and knowledge of education that comes from a career in education is not valued when you can hire someone who has so little of it, if any, in this case, he does, but not much.
Well, I just, what you touched upon, though, like, this year has been extraordinary for educators at every level of the field, from from the substitute teacher all the way up to the directors of education. I might show my bias here, but I think most have really just stepped up to the plate again and again and again to hit it out of the park for our kids and families. But I think the ramifications of this year are going to be felt down the road. There's, there's talk of revamping the system so that we we might have more online learning to substitute snow days, which I I think is a kind of an interesting idea to pursue. I think there's not, there's, it's an interesting dynamic. There's also talk of just greater focus on children's mental health. You know, we've, I've, I've heard from parents that they're just like, you know, going to lockdown, coming out of lockdown, it's just, it's stressing out my kid. Understandably, and like, I think we're seeing, there's, there's rumours or this talk of, we need to start refocusing our education system on a little bit more, on on some mental health, well beings and whatnot. I think that there's going to be a lot of repercussions after that. Also, the fact that I think we're, our kids are a little behind in education. I'm not stressing it over, because everybody's behind. But let's face it, we're all a little behind. It's going to be talk about trying to pick up the pace, what's, what's going to be the future of education? And I'm rambling here, but to me, I look at, say, like, don't you want somebody with a background in education who understands the the principles behind it, how teachers try to impart information to students? How students receive that education? What's, what's the, the, the practical aspects of it versus the theory that you, that you learn about in, in your, in getting your certificate, those kinds of things? Like, there's, there's a lot of nuance there that you want to draw from a depth to sit down at the table and say, you know what? We think we should start entertaining plans A, B and C, or something like that.
I agree, and I speak, like, there's so many different, very good policy documents on mental health. I mean, that's been a document that we've been working with in the, in school boards for years now. Creating pathways to success, making sure students have all sorts of interesting opportunities to figure out what they want to be, starting very early in their progress through the system, so that they have something, a plan that they're working toward. Like, there's so many nuances. Equity and inclusive education is huge, where that is such an enormous focus right now. And that is, it's a lot of work and a lot of learning. Like, I, I feel like I'm, I'm only at the beginning of that, even now, learning what that is and how to do that and how to bring that into a classroom. Thinking about how to change a system to be anti racist and to remove systemic barriers, that's a life's work. That's a lot of learning that has to happen. And if you don't have all of that foundational knowledge and you haven't been kind of moving along, learning as these things have been coming out, it would be a lot to catch up on.
So I just run another hypothesis by you. And I guess my hypothesis would be that the province isn't interested in any of that. Their primary interest is the next time the teachers are negotiating over salaries with them. And the one big advantage over hiring an outsider is that person never will have been a member of any of the teaching unions, has not come from within the system, where you may be senior staff now and not part of the, the union system, but you probably were at some point when you were a teacher, which is a regular teacher. So this is about, and, and, you know, again, Catholic school boards tend to, the trustees tend to skew somewhat, and I say tend, because there are many exceptions, but they tend to skew somewhat to the right because of the religious aspect of the Catholic school boards. We've certainly seen that in other, other school board districts in the recent past. That they are looking to, how do we, how do we get someone in who's not going to do, who's going to kind of fight the unions, basically? Again, I fully admit, I just pulled that out of the air, and it's a hypothesis. But do you think that might be something that's going through anybody's head?
Well, I know that that's the fear, is that this is another step on the way to privatising our system and dismantling what has been, I think, like I said, a very functional, effective, publicly funded system with good outcomes for many people, like, most children have good outcomes. And that this is one of the things that will start to dismantle that and take that away and and change the structure of what we see as education. I know that is a fear. I can see why that's a fear. It certainly has felt like, and I'm not a teacher in the classroom this year, but I know my last year in the system, it felt very, the government feels intentionally antagonistic toward teachers and intentionally antagonistic toward unions. And I think their agenda from the beginning has, privatisation has been on a threat in education since Harris. We've been dealing with that looming threat whenever there was a conservative government, and I don't believe this government's any different. So I, I see why people are suspicious of that.
And certainly, I mean, this disappointment was made by the trustee, will have been made by the trustees of York District Catholic District School Board. I mean, and I haven't looked, but very often, well, it's a much bigger subject. The, the, some of the problems with trustees, I think we've seen in the last week, and we're not going to talk about this today, but in the last week, in Hamilton Wentworth School Board, the report on some of the trustees there and how they related to one of the student trustees is, if you read the report, pretty troubling. It's a shame, because all statistics tell us that Ontario has a really good school system. And that in terms of results, it holds up, like you said at the beginning, with some of the very, very best in the world. And yet, it feels like there are these agendas at work. So, you know, again, you know, there are those people out there like, well, the teachers are paid too much, they get the whole summer off. You know, all the old cliches are out there and find their home, I suspect, in the PCs.
Well, it's felt like a lot of fake news. It's been very frustrating when you've worked in the system and you know what happens for your students in that system. And then the public hears that, they hear EQAO scores, and therefore we are doing terrible in math. It's like, we're not doing terrible in math, we're doing okay, like, really, we're fine. We're at the top of the world in terms of how our students are performing. But the spin is that it's terrible, there's something broken here that needs to be fixed.
And the whole, which was basically this kind of old nonsense of, well, you know, we need just to hit, sit them down and whack them on the back of the knuckles with a stick until they learn their, their. times tables kind of nonsense, which is just, again, I actually grew up in the system when it still kind of did that. And boy, did it not work for me.
I, I'll just, I'll just say, I think that the news, and this is completely on a sidebar, the new system works wonders. My kid is picking up math a lot faster than I did when I was their age. I, 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 I hear your point. I get the EQAO. That's a mouthful, is that, I think it's controversial to begin with. It's, I, but to kind of bring, bring it back to our, our original point of just, yeah, I, I see your point, though, of the, the move to privatization. I mean, this government has been laser focused on teacher satisfaction, teacher help. Like, I, I can't think of the, the last time a government was that focused on, in terms of educational reform, it was just on union disruption. I mean, I,
Please don't say laser focus because every time Mr. Leche says that.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. But I, 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 but I will say it, it is apt because I've, I can't think of a single. I'm trying, I'm, I'm going over my head here. I'm like, any other major policy change to the education ministry? I really can't think of anything that's really substantive, other than wanting to go in and re-change, uh, uh, change the bargaining structure or the bargaining agreements of the unions, which it's one part of it, yeah. But I, as a parent, I'm more concerned about the, the education. I, I'm partly, I think it comes back to the fact that they tried to repeal the sex ed curriculum to satisfy the social conservative portion of their party, and that blew up in their face. Mostly because people said, fine, if you're going to replace, we want to replace with something, replace with something modern, and they couldn't because it was pretty modern. And it worked. Yeah.
You're right. There has been a definite target painted on teachers and it's been deeply felt. The people I work with are in the profession for all the reasons that you would want a teacher to be in the profession. And it's been really dispiriting and discouraging. Even before the pandemic, when you, you were very aware of the fact that you were being painted publicly as lazy, entitled, overpaid, underperforming, like all of the things that are either explicitly or implicitly said by this government. It's really, it's, it's been so discouraging.
But I,
On the time.
I, I, I was just going to say, I know they, they were trying to paint teachers as that. I don't think it worked because if you look at try and remember back pre-COVID, it was a lifetime ago. I know we're all a lot younger and a lot thinner, but it,
Speak for yourself.
But I mean, I, I mean, this, this party was, uh, this, sorry, this government was not well-liked. If you remember, like this time last year, we were doing, we were facing rotating strikes by teachers, uh, unions. And for the most part, the teachers who, the parents who were affected were on the side of the unions. Most, most public sentiment was on the side of the unions. They were looking at, this was unnecessary action on part of the Ford government. People were, were wondering, why don't we just solve it? Like, this, nobody was asking for this. And the only thing that saved their bacon was the pandemic because the pandemic hit and also people were just like, we got to get something signed. We got, we got to put this behind us because we got to deal with the pandemic. And it kind of saved their butts out of the fire in terms of the, the disruption they were facing on the education file. And then every focus.
They also could build their narrative a little bit because the perception some people have, I, I agree that there was support for teachers, but generally only parents in the system who knew what was really going on. The general public who isn't engaged with a public school right now doesn't know and can only go based on what they're hearing in the media, which is often inaccurate, misrepresenting it. But the pandemic, the narrative in the spring was that teachers were off from when the schools shut till June, nothing was happening. In reality, teachers were scrambling and without technology, without their own, with kids at home. I mean, it was chaos.
It, it was.
And what people pulled together.
I was one, I was one of those parents. I was one of those parents that, you know, we were, you know, the teacher's like, I, I don't, like, no, this was not part of my lesson plan. I didn't. Nobody wrote down, hey, COVID-19, what do you do? And I mean, I, I think that came, that would, that I think, I do think it's unfair to lay that at anyone's doorstep because nobody knew that this was coming. And I'm, I'm, I would not blame Minister Leche for, for that. I'm going to blame my, my kid's teacher. Like, I, it was just, it was a shitty situation all around and people just did the best that they could with shit that they were handed. However, I would say that this time around, it's been a lot better. As a parent, I've noticed it. Um, I think that my, at least in my kid's school, and from what I've heard of other kids' schools, the parents, the teachers have really stepped up. The administrations have stepped up to really kind of, okay, where were the gaps last time? Let's take, let's learn. No pun intended. Let's learn, learn what failed last time and correct it now. And for the most part, I think they really stepped up. They, there's still confusion about whether or not it's safe to open schools now, which we're, we're learning, we're, well, this week we reopened schools. Well, I say most of the 905 might, except for, for Peel region. How's this going to work out? I, I don't know. I mean, at, at this point, I kind of shrug my shoulders and say, okay, let's hope for the best because I, I don't, I can't, I'm not going to rack my head around over numbers and and, and what have you. It's crazy.
It, it's, it's been an amazing year for, for, when I say amazing, I mean, amazing is not the right word. It's been a uh, astonishing, I'm trying to put into words, the, the extraordinary nature or an extraordinary year for, for education. And I think the teaching staff have done, uh, wonders, um, in such an impossible situation. And, um, with not enough support from, from the ministry, certainly. And, and I, I, my feeling is that, 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 you know, what we're talking about today is just part of, of the agenda of who has the strongest unions in Ontario? Well, the teachers' unions are, are very effective, um, and have been for a long time. And this government cannot abide that. And I don't know if it's privatization that they have at the end or other end, but I bet they have, uh, breaking the unions at the, as, as an objective number one. And, and that trumps any interest in actual, the quality of education of, uh, our children. And that's me completely editorializing, so I apologize for that.
No, but you're right. And I think that it has felt at times cruel. Like, I do watch the press conferences as much as they're painful for me to watch. I do watch them because I have to hear what they say. But they'll make statements. I think the last one, he said something about a 40% absenteeism rate with teachers, which on its own, first of all, we all looked each other like, 40%? Where, where is that number coming from? It makes teachers sound like they're all staying home, calling sick. Like, there's no context. There's no explanation of that number. Is that because of, I'm still not sure where they get that number from. I don't know anyone who unless they were told to stay home because they were a close contact of a COVID case. I'm not hearing that, but they're, they're citing these numbers. They talk about March break and dangling March break when people are at their breaking point. Kids and teachers, I'm hearing from both sides, they need a break. It's been ridiculous.
That has to be the most asinine argument I have yet to hear to this government's mouth is, let's cancel March break. Because the student, the students need to catch up. And I'm like, what, what do you think they've been doing? Like, my, 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 my kid, you, I, A, I'm like, you're the ones who locked down the schools. Because you let the, you let COVID get out of control. So you had to lock them down. Fine. You sent my kid in to her bedroom to, to go on a computer so she could learn with her classmates online. She, their, their teacher was doing that for five days a week from, from the bell ring to end of day. She didn't miss any school. None of those kids, no kid has missed school unless they purposely just didn't log on that day. Like, I, I don't understand this notion of like somehow they're behind or they're failing. In which case they're kind of like, well, that's your fault, Minister Leche and Dr. Williams, because you're the one who let COVID get this out of control that you were forced to shut down our schools.
But it continues to build the narrative of a broken system that's not working, which I think is probably the bigger intention there. And, and the, the offering of summer catch-up, like they're offering summer school to catch up. And I'm thinking the last thing kids are going to want to do come June is sit in front of the computer until, you know, August and do more school. Um, and there, I'm sure there are some that will take advantage of it.
I, I want them to prove the fact that kids are falling behind. Let's just start with that assumption because I, I don't see it. I've, I'm involved in my board's parental levels and I talked with other parents in the board and they're like, no, my kid logs on, they do their thing. They don't like it, but they still do it. So I'm like, where's the failure? Like, where, where, where have teachers not stepped up to the plate here and adapted and made this work? Like, where have kids been failing?
I think there, the other part of it is, and this is something that we knew going into the pandemic, but boy, did the pandemic drive at home was the inequities in the system. So some kids in some houses have been able to be okay and have a quiet place to work and their own computer and all of the resources they need. Other students in other houses have not had that. They haven't had a safe, quiet room. They're sharing one computer with five siblings, if they have a computer, if they have wifi. So there are students who are being left behind right now and they're of grave concern. They came to our attention immediately. As soon as the pandemic started, that was something we were aware of immediately of the kids that were not, we were not able to reach. We were literally driving and dropping things off at people's houses because, like, remember they had the school bus route set up to drop off packages, paper and pencil, because there were no other options.
If, if only the government were sitting on $6 billion in unspent funds.
Oh, don't even get me started.
You know, geez, if, if only we had that kind of money to spend on students on a provincial level, who knew?
Who knew? That's extremely frustrating. And I, I'm looking at Twitter and it's where I watch to see what my peeps across the province are saying and they, they're showing up today and like, I don't see extra PPE. I don't see any of, nothing is different in terms of safety measures or money spent to make this safer.
So there's supposed to be increased testing. I mean, I'll, I'll, I'll believe that when I see it. But I, I, like, we're not, we're not, still not working on trying to decrease student numbers in a, in a classroom. We're not trying, we haven't yet figured out how to get to that magic 15 students per classroom level.
Well, it's happening in secondary. Now, secondary is pretty good at low class numbers because they have shit, but elementary.
Oh, no, like, that's, that's the thing is that we're not, like, we haven't really there, you know, we're not, I don't know. I just, I found that we, we, we kind of gave up on that and it's just trigger shows. Well, you know, we did everything we could, which was not anything.
Yeah.
That's me editorializing.
And it's been hard to watch friends who I log on with them and I look at them and it's like, are, are you okay? They look like they've aged 10 years. Like, they're just, they're worried about their kids. They're exhausted. They don't know what's, literally things change on a dime and they will get, I was talking to someone today who got a call the night before that he was teaching. He was not, he was essentially assigned person without a class. He got a call on a Sunday night that he was teaching grade three the next day. Go. That is not an easy thing to pull off overnight. A class of grade threes for a five-hour day. Now, there's just so much uncertainty and we know human beings do not do well when they have no control over their situation and uncertainty. And I think that's, the whole system has been like that. Part of it's unavoidable and I think a large part of it has been very avoidable. And that goes back to the ministry.
Well, I think that's probably a, a good place to, uh, to, to draw this to a close. Um, so I see that we're approaching the three quarters now, Mark. Thanks so much for, uh, joining us again. Cindy, really appreciate you, uh, coming on and sharing your expertise. Uh, and I suspect we'll be back here again before, um, before too many months have passed again. So, uh, thanks so much for.
To come and talk about to spiral out of that education.
As, well, that's, that's, that's what we like, like heated, uh, heated, uh, passionate, uh, statements. Yeah. So thanks so much.
Awesome. Take care. Stay well.
That's it for this episode of the 905er. Thank you for listening. As always, you can send us your feedback, thoughts and concerns or ideas for future episodes to our email, info@905er.ca. We'd love to hear from you. You can help us keep the 905er going by financially supporting us through Patreon as well as PayPal. Visit us at 905er.ca and click on the support tab. As well, links are in the show notes for your convenience. Lastly, you can find us on social media. Search for the underscore 905er on Facebook, Twitter, Instagram and LinkedIn. So long for now. See you next time.